Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It is April twenty first. This is the Newburgh City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Certainly. Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman's not yet here. Counselor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Counselor Turgason?
Here.
And Counselor Carmen?
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all please stand and join us in the Pride of Legion? The first item on our agenda today is a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. Whereas the great republic is a nation of many vibrant faiths, whose founding fathers wisely refused to set one faith above others, and whereas our great town and community is made up of many faiths and a rich spirituality, throughout the history of America, we have poured out prayers to the God of hope. In times of crisis and celebration, in prosperity and need, in times of war and peace, we have praised our God, praised, we have poured out praise to God for all he is. Thanks to God for all he has done, confessions and pleas for forgiveness when we have parted from his words and will. From the first prayer of our Centennial Congress in seventeen seventy-four to the opening of every session of the House of Representatives and the Senate, and throughout hearts and homes across America, the practice of prayer continues to seek God for guidance, wisdom, power, protection, and provision that has persevered hope and united us as one nation under God. The National Day of Prayer is a public law established in the United States Congress in nineteen fifty-two, approved by a joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan in nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-eight, affirming that it is essential for the us as a nation to pray and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a National Day of Prayer. And whereas in our city and across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May first, two thousand twenty-five with the theme, Pour Out to the God of Hope and Be Filled. Now may the God of Hope fill you all with joy and peace in believing so that you will be abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the city mayor and the city council and on behalf of the people of the city of Newburgh, Oregon, that we declare May first, two thousand twenty-five as a day of prayer. Throughout our city, and I commend this observance to our citizens and request that prayers be poured out for our city. For our neighbors as we live, serve, work, and learn together, that we may be filled with joy and peace and abound in hope. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Newburgh to be affixed on this twenty-first day of April, two thousand twenty-five. So the first business item on our agenda is always our city manager's report. Welcome, Will. Good to see you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Are we clicker fired? Okay, we're clicker fired. Okay, these are the monthly statistics through the end of February twenty twenty-five. And for those who don't tune in regularly to watch the city manager's report, they're always a little bit behind because that lets all of the statistics settle out so we can collect the trends. First of all, continuing the theme of limited construction happening both here and Oregon and arguably nationally, there were only five planning decisions considerably less than the averages we've seen in previous years. Only one permit was pulled for a housing unit, but there will be many more pulled soon as Kalina starts to come under fuller construction. Sixty-five building permits of other types, and once again, you can see that's not a lot of activity compared to either our trends from last year or our trends from the last two years before. And building inspections, that may be the lowest building inspection number that I have ever presented to this council in over three and a half years, once again indicating how housing starts are just not happening right now very much. Each housing start or other construction, of course, triggers many building inspections. Community engagement, twenty-three items came through and were answered through the website. And you can see that's kind of on par with recent years. And you can see we had a somewhat quieter year in twenty-four, but it's typical. Sixteen thousand three hundred and eighteen on social media engagement. And that trend has continued to grow since Emily added a couple of extra platforms to our social media engagement, and really that has been the driver, more push on LinkedIn and some other items. Community engagement, social followers, not that different from before, and those do continue to just slowly tick up over time. But what a whopping month the city recorder's office had with eleven public records requests. Of course, each public records request, a vital thing in civil society, but nonetheless time-consuming, could take perhaps an hour, but some requests might take four or five hours to complete, especially if documents were being sought from other departments such as, for example, as-built diagrams from engineering. Finance, one point two three millions of payments to accounts payable and one point one three millions of payroll. And as you know, our payroll expenses do have trended up nine percent per year, often driven by benefit costs. In the recruitment world, we recruit, we had three recruitments advertised, zero hires, one separation, and two claims. I will tell you that we recently heard from our insurance broker and our loss record is extremely excellent compared to our neighboring cities, and we will be seeing only a small increase in our insurance rate compared to many other cities, particularly compared to our neighbors in Washington County, who all have a much worse record than we do in this area. And so we're, we don't have a high experience of loss because we're doing good safety things, and therefore that's going to show when you see the numbers in the budget for the insurance increase. But it's still an increase, of course. And IT resolved three hundred and twenty-seven service tickets. That was a very busy month for us and a lot going on, of which though, only one fell after hours, which is a lot less than we've seen in the past. Library activity continues to be smashing all the way through the winter. Door count, seven thousand one hundred and sixty-four. Circulation events, thirty thousand five seventy-two. And I can reveal that some of these months our circulation rivaled that of the much larger Salem Public Library. So although we are the third smallest library in the system, our circulation approached theirs. And with their recent staffing cuts, I think that's going to continue. Public safety, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three calls for service, a little less than average, but it was a quieter month. And six forty-one on traffic stops. And generating five hundred and sixty citations and warnings. And you see that number's a little higher than normal, but not unusual. And that's, and it's never great, but five DUIIs, not too bad, all things considered. In dispatch world, six hundred and twenty-nine nine-one-one calls and two thousand two hundred and eighty-six non-emergency calls. I would point out at this point that those non-emergency calls could still be very important to the person placing the call. For example, when my mother-in-law saw someone going through her trash cans, she knew it wasn't an emergency, but she was still a little concerned about it. And so it was good that she was reassured by just having a friendly voice. And Public Works water production, forty-three point six million gallons of delicious clean water produced and a hundred and forty-two point nine million gallons of the other stuff. And now we're going to see that the, dealing with the other stuff is going to go down as we come into the summer months in the normal pattern, those two numbers pass each other. Public Works really knocked the ball out of the park, though, on work orders completed. One thousand five hundred and seven work orders completed. As you know, we've had a couple of water main breaks happen recently. That was part of that, although of course, there's a lot of other regular things that they do all the time. So that's the totals to the end of February. It's always a challenge to make statistics interesting, but we can see some trend lines emerging as we always look at them. Relatively light DUIIs, very high wastewater processing in the winter, and an uptick in help ticket activity for IT, partly driven by a bunch of testing that we're having to do because we're being forced onto Windows eleven. None of us want to go to Windows eleven, but Microsoft is doing that to us. And a lot of PRRs hitting admin staff time. Are there any questions?
Quick, when, what are the three positions that you, you're advertising for?
So in that particular month, we were looking for a lateral police officer. We were looking for an entry-level police officer, and I think, was there a communications officer back then? Okay. Now, I will say, less good news. We just had five Public Works maintaining staff go to the city of Hillsborough. And we are very short-staffed. This just happened recently. They're offering three or four dollars more an hour than we do. A lot of the guys don't necessarily live right here. They live in other areas. So that's a big problem that we have right now. We just had to start a big recruiting push to fill those positions. And it's frustrating for our guys because they feel like we train them up, they get their certs, and then they're gone. So.
Did we fill those, uh, police officers' positions?
Yes.
So by the way, I see we have a large contingency from Paulan Valley Fire and Rescue. Thank you guys for all that you do, and thanks for being here tonight. Next is public comments, and we have one from Michael Rossman. Come on up, Mike. You're, you're with the Traffic Safety Commission, right?
Yes, I am. We're Traffic Safety Commission.
Right.
Okay. Yes, Michael Rossman, uh, with your Traffic Safety Commission. I actually thought our meeting was tonight, but it turns out it's next Monday, but I and kind of report in because I do work for all of you as well. Um, so I wanted to share with you frankly, unfortunately, the, the low morale being suffered in the Traffic Safety Commission because we don't have a way to provide service to our constituents. Um, I have pages of citizen requests for everything from side, for, um, crossing, pedestrian crossing, stop signs, speed bumps, all sorts of ideas. Recently, we put forward a, a traffic calming policy, which is meant because right now there actually is no traffic calming policy that we have, which is, well, why do you need a policy to fix a pothole? Well, the point, kind of without a policy, though, we're all kind of making some assumptions about what we're trying to do with our streets for pedestrians, for bicycles, for cars and things. Um, so that had been submitted and we, um, really haven't heard much back. Now, I recognize that, um, a couple of weeks ago, some members from our commission, uh, I believe, reported out to you folks. So I do not have the, the advantage of having heard all that they said about this. But, um, in case they didn't give a push for the traffic calming policy that is on your desk, we really appreciate some feedback. What should we do? It was after that meeting, our last January meeting, though, that the Newburgh graphic had a front page article titled Good Pavement, A Precious Commodity in Newburgh. Perhaps many of you saw it. It stuck with me. I actually kept it. Um, because it really, thanks to Mr. Worthy's explanations that were quoted in there, kind of explained why we are having the frustrations that we're having, the economic realities of ODOT, their monetary sharing and our, and our city budget. Um, first I gotta say, though, um, how much we appreciated having Derek there at our last meeting. He is a breath of fresh air and kind of kept us all paddling on here. So. Thank, thank you, Derek. And Brett Music is, by the way, the, the city, um, senior engineer who represents the city here on commission. We're just laypeople. But I've got, I'm gonna give you one example. I live over in the Greens neighborhood, so this intersection, Bruiser and Fernwood, it's right there on the corner with the community colleges and Bruiser's comes past the assisted living homes and all. And the whole, the path that goes around the golf course and all empties right there, and there's always people crossing there, including senior citizens from the assisted living homes and all. There's no crosswalks, nothing there, and the Fernwood traffic does not stop at all. Um, totally uncontrolled from a pedestrian standpoint. Uh, we've gotten multiple requests. This last, it was, um, from twenty twenty-nine of twenty twenty-two. We, as your Traffic Safety Commission, have had no response to give to these poor citizens. So your citizens, I've got pages of requests like that, um, are talking to, to an empty bucket, as it may seem. Um, so that, that's kind of why we're frustrated. You know, I wish we kind of had a budget that we could allocate and help prioritize. Well, that, maybe that crosswalk walk on Fernwood and Bruiser might be the next one or something we recommend. But, so we're left right now with really not a role that we play. That said, I will give credence. I believe it's a year or two from now, there is a, um, major traffic development plan that um, needs to be reviewed. Thank, thank you. Okay. And I understand that we will have input into that. That provides some guidance to the traffic engineers and all about what to go after and such, but, um, uh, I, I hope that perhaps, um, Mr. Worthy and your presentations in the future, you know, there could be something more about the state of our streets and, um, safety. Uh, I believe our streets right now, according at least to this article, are in generally a state of where we're not keeping up with the general degradation that occurs due to winter and driving and studs on tires and all the things that deteriorate pavement. Um, let alone making traffic safety, traffic calming improvements. I'm sure, um, so that's mine. Um, I'm a retired engineer. I'm dangerous. My wife will tell you when I don't have something to do, so I'm dangerous on the commission because I need something to do. So, um, keep us pointed, perhaps even give Derek, Derek, um, any instructions to pass on for what we should be doing besides gallicetics. Okay, thank you.
It's not, it's not often I get to see good news about our road condition index because the PCI index has gone down. With our limited funds that we have, there are some things that we have done, though, to respond to not just this Traffic Safety Commission request, but other ones that we've seen in the past. First of all, the city has just finished paying for a LiDAR scan of the entire city. So that data set is about to get integrated into our GIS model, and that will enable us to really see. We, we did do surveying before, but surveying can be anecdotal. So we're gonna have hard data on road surface. As soon as Alan McKeel, who might be the best GIS man in the business, don't try and steal him TVFNR, he's gonna integrate that data set, and that'll be happening probably in the next week or two because we've got the data. The second thing is, we've just completed our interview process for our new GIS position. I modified the job description, which was a financially conservative move to use the same position to add extra functions to the position, which would be the collection of flow meter data and traffic data. We also have purchased our own in-house traffic count equipment. So as soon as this person's trained and comfortable, we're going to be able to do some traffic survey work without having to run subconsultancy fees. That will help a little bit. And thirdly, with regard to the, the crosswalk that you're referring to, actually today was in an email exchange, including Clay Downing with CPRD to talk about how we can work together to try to put a crosswalk in there. What we're gonna have to do is have CPRD realign their trail a little bit so that it can meet the location where we feasibly could put a crosswalk in. If we can negotiate that successfully, and of course, our engineer will have to be present too, because we're gonna have to add some panels as well as two ramps. So it's not gonna be super cheap, but it's doable. I hope to have some progress on that crosswalk in the very near future. And Clay so far is proving to be a very friendly partner to work with the city.
Thank you. It's, um, kind of fortuitous that I would bring up that one, um, item here, and that's great to hear some progress here, so. I think it's probably the mayor's proclamation. Oh, yeah. And, uh, so, thank you for hearing me out and looking forward to seeing you again next Monday.
Well, Brett should be bringing all your concerns to the, uh, city council. The folks there in the back of the room like to drive big trucks to your neighborhood pretty fast when somebody's having a heart attack. So they, they don't like to hear traffic calming measures. It knows that contacted a lot of cases, but we'll keep working with them. Next on our agenda is the Taste Newburgh presentation. Welcome. Haven't seen you in eons. Yeah, fifteen minutes?
Hi, everybody. Um, all right, let's get started. Let's put the glasses on so I can see. Um, good evening, Mayor, Councilor, staff. I'm Lee Jensen, Executive Director for Taste Newburgh, and this is
I'm Katie McFall, and I'm the Deputy Director for Taste Newburgh.
And we're here to go through our mid-year review with you as in accordance with our current contract that is up in June. Mister, wait, for the contract. Oh, okay. So as you are all aware, um, Taste Newburgh was started, um, as Visit Newburgh, we're Visit Newburgh because tourism is an economic driver. Um, our mission statement is to stimulate a year-round visitors' economy in Newburgh. Um, and then to make Newburgh, um, widely acknowledged as one of the most extraordinary and distinctive destinations in Oregon and a best-in-class tourism res- resource in Yamhill County. Um, and so we're gonna tell you a little bit about how we are doing that. Um, I think I forgot to say, by the way, if at any point I say something and you want to ask a question, feel free to just interrupt us and ask the question because I don't know about you, but I'll forget if I wait till the end sometimes.
I'm having issues with the pointer.
Technical difficulties. Okay, so, um, when we talk about being an economic driver, the thing that we talk about for us is TLT resources, which is overnight stays. So we use data that we have, that, um, we have from our data source that comes in. Um, and it tells us where people are coming from. So I thought you guys would find this interesting because you see that over the last so many years, Portland is a place that comes in often. Seattle, Tacoma, um, Eugene, Medford, um, Los Angeles. Um, and then what we do with this is that we take these numbers and we try to get them to go from just people that stay two nights to people that stay three days, to people that stay four days. Because our goal as, um, a DMO and in our city is to have people come and stay longer because that helps everybody's budgets and that helps, that gets them to do more things, not only in our community, but in our local area for all of our businesses and so forth. These, um, these help us for retargeting. Right now, we're doing a lot of retargeting where we're asking people to stay within Oregon because that's really the resource that's traveling. Um, because there's a lot of controversy out there on some other stuff. And so that's our low-hanging fruit. Um, our DMO and our Wine Country License plate programs, um, pretty much market to a lot of the exact same places that you see on there. But those are the people that come, and those are when they, and that when they've come over the last so many years. So part of our job, um, in our next last contract was, um, one of the requirements was to do a strategic plan. So last June, we got, um, the Chamber, NDC, there were city council members there. There were quite a few different people there, and we had a, a session on what are we looking for? What are the things that we want to push? And this is what we came up with is our strategic plan um, in these three different categories for two-year goals, five-year goals, and kind of where we are. Um, so what we're gonna do with our report tonight is really talk to you about where we're at with this plan and what we're doing. So we're gonna start with destination development, um, and Katie, as you all know, runs that for us, and she will take it from here.
Yeah, so, um, great to be here tonight. So, um, as you saw from the strategic plan, some of the priorities are to develop existing assets, um, that are in our area um, to get people to come and stay longer and also diversify what they're doing here. We're centered in wine country, which is an amazing asset. Um, but we want to diversify the types of options and marketing that we're able to do in our destination. Um, so a little bit of background about this is that we have been developing a dark sky experience. And the reason for that is because Travel Oregon, the statewide tourism office, they have a significant marketing budget, of course, as a state entity. And they have really been leaning into dark sky tourism. And so they have a much larger national and international megaphone that they are sharing about Oregon and things that are being offered within the state. Um, so last year, kind of when I started, um, we started working on a partnership which takes time with, um, Northwest Jet Boat Charter. Um, he operates right out of Rogers Landing and the Carlton Observatory and Willamette Riverkeeper. Um, Carlton Observatory is located in Carlton, and they have a big mission to, um, showcase astrological things to, um, they're trying to build a large telescope outside of Carlton. So they have a lot of different activities and things that they do. So we built this kind of partnership and last fall, um, like the last presentation we gave, we gave, we did a test run to see like, is this experience on the river doing a stargazing experience through a telescope, is this even feasible? And it turns out it was. And so this week, we're actually hosting two, um, industry test runs. So we have some media coming out to experience the experience, to start pitching it out to publications and to be marketed. That then will then turn into where we have bookable experiences in August, September, and October this year for people that are in market or looking to go out on the river that can book this experience and go out on the boat, have a stargazing experience. Um, and so that's really exciting. We're really excited to see how it lands, how it goes, um, and also feedback from industry folks that are gonna be attending. So really excited about that offering. I will say that, um, Travel Oregon is really excited because they have, um, stargazing experience offered at state parks all over the state. But they're like, we don't have a bookable, like, experience that people that were marketing dark sky experiences can come and actually do. So very excited about that. Um, the next thing is, we talked a little bit about accessible travel. So, um, accessibility means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Um, and so we've been partnering with Travel Oregon and the Willamette Valley Visitors Association, um, to build out this program called Wheel the World. It's a marketing platform, um, where people that have differing needs and abilities Where people that have differing needs and abilities are able to go and find out about their vacation, have pictures, have information. What to expect when they get there and how to book their trip. So we have thirteen businesses in our community evaluated to participate in this program. They will then be on the Wheel the World website. And then they will be put into marketing campaigns that we will be doing. The Willamette Valley Visitors Association will be doing and Travel Oregon. So it's all kind of tied into this larger statewide effort around accessible travel. I will note that accessible travel is a really niche audience, but they're very high-value visitors. They come. They come with many people and they stay for longer periods of time. And that's why the state has kind of been leaning into that. So the next slide, I kind of just wanted to show you what it looks like, what their website looks like. So I just copied this off their website, but as you can see, you can just book your whole travel experience through this website. So it's a booking engine and so we have, we will have some analytics for partners that are participating in the program. So the next thing. In destination development is the Recreation Ready Program. Which we have, we're really excited about. There's a lot happening this week with this program as well. But it's a program that Travel Oregon rolled out to really do some feasibility assessment. Project identification. And so we, we applied as a community to look at the Willamette River as a key asset. And how we can improve that for a visitor experience as well as a local community experience and talk about river access or amenities. That could really enhance that. So. The Steering Committee is comprised of the City of Newburgh, Yamhill County Parks and Shahealan Park and Rec Department. And all of us are working together to kind of talk about the opportunities, the gaps and what can kind of come from this. So we were one of four communities selected within the state to participate in the program. There was no cost to participate in this first round of the program. Wednesday, there will be two community gatherings for folks to come and provide input. And so there's all this information on the Travel Oregon website and I'll be there. You know, we have good registration numbers so far. And then after that, Travel Oregon will be putting together a plan, like an action plan. That then can be implemented in the next eighteen months. And there will be some funding that comes along with that as well. And the last kind of larger destination development piece I wanted to talk about was a Yamhill County Recreation Map. So one of the goals and one of the things in our county is that we don't have a centralized county destination marketing organization. And so we have actually just all of the local DMOs from the communities in the county have been meeting regularly to talk about. Tourism priorities and tourism initiatives happening around the county. Because when visitors come, they don't know the difference between one community to another. So one of the priorities that kind of bubbled up from that was an outdoor recreation map. Travel Oregon has a program where they've done, I think, twelve recreation maps around the state. And that was a gap area, as we've talked about, trying to build product development that's outside of wine tourism. So we reached out to Travel Oregon and to the Willamette Valley Visitors Association to see if they had funding to help support us with the map. And we got lucky and they said, we do, but you have to use it this fiscal year. Because our fiscal year, we're not going to have the money the next fiscal year. So. Travel Oregon's put up about thirty-five thousand dollars for the map. And the Willamette Valley Visitors Association has put up about fifteen thousand dollars for the map. And so we have been managing the project of collecting the outdoor recreation assets amongst the county with a steering committee. Collecting photos, copy involving Grand Ron to also participate. And write a piece of copy about First Foods. So all of that is happening. And then we will through Travel Oregon disperse and distribute this. Map or brochure through certified folders, which they will be hitting key drive markets is where you will be able to find the map. So outside of market areas like Vancouver, where people can pick up the map and then drive to our destination. So that's a little bit about the outdoor recreation map. I think we should have it in hand. My guess is probably September, fingers crossed. We're kind of been doing it pretty expeditedly in alignment with the fiscal year. So that's some destination developments that we.
She also has to have it all done by June first, by the way. Because she has another project coming online.
Yes, yes.
So the next thing that we wanted to talk about, so the next group over on our strategic plan would be marketing and PR. So at the, the beginning part of the marketing PR, the thing we talked about. They agreed as was to create a new website. And so as many of you know, we launched our rebranded updated website with the new front page. These are kind of a part of it, just kind of giving you an example. So we were a little later. We had hoped to do it in December, but if anybody's done websites, which we know you all have. You all know it never comes in the time that you hope it's going to come in. And that you find way more bugs in the process than you were hoping to find. But we have been working diligently at getting this done and we do have. We still have about sixty-five blogs that we are working through. So from the beginning of Chase Newburgh to now. So we're still working through that. There's some SEO as to why we can't just shut those down or take everything off. Because they're connected to other marketing plans. There's a little behind the scenes. Tomorrow, we're actually working with the, the designers that helped us design the new page. On the next plan for our website, which is the secondary pages, because we, those need to match. Our front page a little bit better with coloring. We've already changed a lot of our wording. We are constantly updating Otis. That is the system that comes through Travel Oregon that brings in all of our people. We will be updating that until the end of time, to be honest. So we're always updating that, but that's kind of where we are with the website. We're excited. And we're getting a lot of really positive feedback. To give you an example, we wanted to talk about kind of marketing. This is, we really only have about a month. That we have launched this. So we wanted to just give you a little, hopefully we'll be able to send by. Probably middle of May, a little bit better of a report to all of you and say, hey, now we're like, you know, sixty, ninety days in, here's what we're seeing. But as you can see, we do say engagement is up. You can see a little bit of what's, and I can see it if I put my glasses on. What pages people are going to. Google, the organic, all of that that's happening. So you'll see a little bit of that. That's our marketing that goes along and then. So that you get, this is the new branded marketing. This is an example of some of our ads that are go, that are out there on Meta, Google search and right now. And we're having a great click rate and people are staying online. We're getting a lot of impressions. And I mean, eighty-one thousand for just the small time that it's been up is pretty amazing. So we're really excited. We do have a video that's potentially coming out soon for that, but we can't. We're not going to, you have to invite us back to see more. It's all I can say. The next part of that marketing campaign was PR. And so we wanted to leverage a new company and Katie will tell you a little bit about what we're doing there.
Yeah, so like we mentioned, one of our goals was to focus on our PR efforts, public relations efforts. And really focus on national media. So trying. Visitors that come from further away tend to stay longer. So that's the intention of really targeting national media. So just so you know, for reference, when it says audience reach, UVM is unique visitors per month. Just for some clarity about what that looks like. And so we've had some really great wins actually in the last, you know, nine months. We had some hits from Forbes and then there on the bottom, you also see Chef Javier talking about Truffle Market. And these are all traditional media placements. And so there's traditional media, which is print media. Things online, more traditional publications. They take longer to be produced. So we may host a travel writer. That comes and they might, might not write a story for a year. And then there's, you know, I would say not non-traditional, but there's influencer media. So here's some more media that we've traditionally placed. And then there's influencer media, which is immediate. And that's who you see, you know, on social media. Where they're coming out to destinations or posting when they're there. They have their own reach and their own audience. So we've hosted some traditional as well as some influencer media to try to diversify. The groups that we're reaching and the people that are, that are seeing our content. So yeah, that's a little bit about our PR. It was really nice and really fun to have the influencers out. We hosted them for the Oregon Chardonnay Celebration. And we saw a lot of really great coverage and a lot of high engagement from those.
And you do the different PR, just so that everybody is that. You all get reached in different ways and some of them are different. Facts that like an influencer could get somebody to come stay at a quick, like maybe we need somebody in two weeks. So you're more likely to fill your hotel rooms for people going, ooh, that looks cool. I want to go do it now, right? As compared to maybe a print media where somebody sees a story and then they're like, oh, I'm going to plan that trip for six months for now. So it's really kind of, you're meeting people at different edges and different parts of where they're looking. So that's kind of why you do those different things, to just kind of give you some background. Then we have our social engagement. We are still doing some tweaking here. We have updated, we have some new reels and we have a new calendar that we're working on, but we have increased our followers. Social media is tricky. Just because there's a lot of AI stuff going on. There's a lot of. Different technology stuff going on right now. We're constantly working at our Google searches because of. You know, it used to be, I know when you all Google searched before, you saw things that came up from here. And now you have the AI generated and then you get the searches or, you know. Social media is tweaking you to go someplace else that it wasn't tweaking you before. So I just actually just went to a tech conference to kind of learn more. And help us to become some best practices. So we're going to be doing some additional editing on here. But we're working on reels and we have an amazing social media person. She does us and she does a lot of different wineries. In wine country. She's been doing it for a long time and she's, she's fabulous. So the last part of our strategic plan that was industry relations. This is something that we are just now sort of touching on. One of the things that the whole group agreed way back when. Was potentially trying to create some sort of a hospitality, training, awards. Maybe where we support people to know more about, we support our hoteliers to know more about our restaurants, our restaurants know more about our. Hoteliers, where we maybe have a way where people can engage social media and give people awards and say, gosh, I went into this restaurant. And that waitress was like, amazing, you know, or I went here. So these are just two examples of some programs and some trainings that are happening here in Oregon. That we're just starting to look at now. This is definitely somewhere that I see would be a collaborative thing between most of the. Organizations in our town, because we need everybody to come online and talk about it and talk positively. And have the same message that we're giving everybody. If you go back to the strategic plan, which you guys have copies, if you want one, let me know. I'm happy to send you. You'll see that there's also five-year plans and so we are starting initiatives and we have sort of plans on how we're going to move through those next. But we're doing really good. Where were we at? Oh, budget. So this is just halfway, not even half. I think it's a quarter. Three quarters of a way within our budget for this year. And we are doing well. The extra income that we received is we got some grants money. Which was very exciting and we're hoping for some more grant money. But, and we started off with a little bit. We also had a little bit of reserve that we had left over from that, but not a lot. So that's our budget for this year. We, just to kind of make sure everybody understands. The next quarter that we're going into, because it's a check that comes from January, February and March is our lowest quarter of TLT revenue. Both for ourselves and for the city. It's one of our need periods. It's one of the things that we focus very strongly on. Why we started some truffle stuff and so forth. But it's still a need period. So we hold some resources so that we can consistently stay in marketing. It's called being on marketing, because what would happen otherwise is that we would have to pull out of all markets. So we're always looking to stay in market and even use more reserve and some of our money constantly. So we've been working on that over the last several years. These are just some of the few partners that we work in all over the state. And then we have lots of local partners, but all over the state, a lot of different people that we do a lot of different things with. And that's pretty much, thank you for letting us come. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them or we can go away.
I just want to make sure I understand the numbers.
Absolutely.
Can you go back to the marketing report page?
Let me make, let me get my glasses on so I can see it.
No, you're good.
This one or this one?
Next one. One with the numbers. That one. Can you help me understand? I guess I'm curious about the six thousand active users versus the five point nine. New users, like were there no users before? Are these unique users per month?
So what it's saying is that you, you have six point six thousand users that usually come to visit. And you got, you've gotten some additional five point nine users. In other words. And part of the right reason why this doesn't completely make sense to you is. You have a new website. So you only have several weeks of data here. Because you lost certain cookies and so forth in tracking our new website. Which is why I said I just wanted to give you this big, little bit of a screenshot and I'll come back in another month and kind of share more about where. The new branding, the new website comes from. But so as of the moment that they were using it, right then, they had six thousand people that were there. And then they got, it's just, it's just a, it's like taking a little bitty screenshot of what kind of was going on with the new website. And it's very skewed because when you launch a new website, you have the new cookies, you have the new tags, you have all of that stuff going on. But we had to get this to you pretty quickly after all of that happened. So. We'll have an updated report, like I said, middle of May and we'll send it out to you guys. So you have a better idea of what's actually been going on. Because we definitely want to show you all the successes, but we can't really right now.
Okay.
But we're happy to show them to you.
I would love, even for just a few weeks, like I am not a social media person.
That's okay.
It's like my little baby campaign would have like seven hundred and fifty hits. I would love to see updated data because that feels low.
It's, it are, we actually get a lot more social media hits that you would be surprised, like neighboring towns. Get about two thousand people that go to their website every month. We get about forty-some thousand people that go to our website. Yeah, you could, we can even show you old reports, but this is because we got the new website and so it's a little skewed right now. But yeah, we, I, you know, it was kind of like, we wanted to show you something so that you kind of saw that we were out there in market, but it's definitely hard. Yeah.
Next on our agenda tonight. Is the Oregon Main Street presentation.
And Sherri will be joining us online, so she should be popping up on the screen. Open it so you can see her face.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. Thank you for inviting me to be part of the presentation tonight. I'm Sherri Stewart. I coordinate the statewide Oregon Main Street Network. Which is composed of about a hundred and fifteen communities that are part of our network right now. Oregon Main Street is our state's place-based economic development program. We're housed in Oregon Parks and Rec in Oregon Heritage. Next slide, please. One of the things I'd like to cover as part of this introductory session is really just the impact. That our program has as a result of our program being in place. We contracted with an outside consultant to do an assessment, a ten-year assessment of our program. We contracted them with in twenty twenty-two. And as a result of a community having an active main street organization in place, looking at the twenty-five top-tier communities at that time. The outside consultant found that we strengthen the local network in communities. And really have an economic, fiscal and social impact. As a result of a downtown program being in place. It's really helping. Enhance the economic base. It's looking at. Um, the economic base is looking at attracting people and financial resources to the community. And then it's fundamentally getting people involved in some of the activities that are mainstream programs. Are implementing um of wide variety across the state. Next slide, please. Again, where we're housed, um we're part of Oregon Heritage, part of Oregon Parks and Rec. Oregon Heritage also. Uh encompasses a historic preservation um part of state government, so National Register. Um, survey work, um, the Heritage Commission. Historic cemeteries, heritage all-stars, all sorts of different types of heritage programs. Um, that's where we live in state government. Next slide, please. In Oregon, we have a tiered structure in how we serve communities to those that are just waiting in. Um, at the connected communities level to those that are deeply entrenched. In comprehensive downtown revitalization efforts at the Main Street track level. Uber has been at different levels. Um, uh, you had been on our Main Street track for a number of years, but. Uh, around the pandemic kind of pulled back uh to the connected communities level to kind of regroup. We provide technical assistance and training and resources to communities um during. Uh, their progression in the Main Street track. But communities that are the connected communities can participate in our workshops and our trainings. Take advantage of our Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant. We also created a new tier, the Rural Regional Main Street, a few years ago. To really uh come up with a way that we could serve really small communities. Across the state that previously hadn't been able to have a pathway forward. Um, so we work with the Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce, for example, that covers a tri-county area and has. Uh, ten communities under their umbrella that they coordinate and work in concert with us. Next slide, please. Some of the reasons why communities want to participate in our Oregon Main Street Network. Is there's one, there's no cost to participate. Um, and nor do we charge a fee for any of the services uh once communities are are participating. The only thing that we have a fee for currently. Is um going to our conference um once every two years, but otherwise there's no training. But some of the big reasons why communities want to be part of the Oregon Main Street Network. Um, are their networking opportunities. Um, we really lean very heavily in connecting communities across the state. Um, so that they could share their experiences, their resources, their concerns. And really help support each other. We do what we call our mornings on main call every week. Um, so those communities that um have time can jump on in, share what's going on in their communities or brainstorm. If they have an issue, we have an active listener. We do quarterly in-person network meetings for our name. Main Street track. So there's a lot of networking opportunities that are happening. We also do direct education through our conference workshops that we provide. And trainings to board and staff and committees of our local Main Street organizations. Again, the only thing we charge for is um the conference. We also for a Main Street track provides some direct technical assistance. Um, so we might have communities. Uh, with um some assessment visits um or planning type activities, board retreats, strategic plannings. Program evaluations, other types of assessments. So those types of uh technical assistance. We provide directly or we contract um with consultants to provide those. Again, at no charge to communities that are participating in our network. If a community hasn't had a reconnaissance level survey, we also provide that through our offices as well. Um, fundamentally, we serve as a resource center. We have a lot of publications or sample documents. Um, that help meet the needs of communities in our network. The one thing we also have in addition to. Um, this when funding is authorized by the legislature is the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant. Um, this round of applications um which just closed. Uh, we had ten million in funding for building improvement projects that helps support. Local economic development goals and objectives of the Main Street organization. So we're reviewing grant applications for building improvement projects up to four hundred thousand dollars per project. So any level of community participating in our network from those connected communities. Up to our accredited Main Street level. Um, organizations are eligible to apply. For those grant dollars on behalf of the business or property owner that would like to make improvements. All of our resources. That we have available um live on our website at oregonmainstreet.org. Next slide, please. When we work with communities, we use a methodology that uh looks at all of the things that make for a healthy and vibrant downtown. That was developed by Main Street America, which is a nonprofit subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. So we have um the uh coordinating a license and agreement with Main Street America. To be the statewide coordinating entity. Um, we pay a licensing fee so that our communities can be branded with Main Street America. They can use the comprehensive methodology. They can call themselves a Main Street organization. So we're that connector between this national methodology. And our local programs that are actively implementing the Main Street approach. Next slide, please. How Main Street works, uh, the the comprehensive approach is really looking at. All of those things that make for a healthy and vibrant downtown. So we look at those physical improvements, both building. Uh, improvement side and public sector side through what we call the design pillar. We look at strengthening the economic base, um existing businesses and helping. Create a system for new entrepreneurs to open through the economic vitality pillar. Um, we work with communities in developing um events and activities and marketing efforts. Uh, for their downtown through the promotion pillar and fundamentally help our communities. Build the leadership and attract the resources that they need to be successful. Over the long haul through the organization or or outreach pillar, how we like to call it here in in Oregon and Washington. Um, when we work with communities, it's not me coming in, even though I've been involved in Main Street communities for thirty-five years. Um, it's really coming in, listening to communities, helping them establish their goals and objectives. And come up with their own strategies and activities that they want to implement over the long haul. By listening to the community, listening to partners and really developing um that overall blueprint. On how they want to move forward with their local effort. So it's really um community-driven and not. Somebody like me from the outside coming in and telling the community what they could and should be doing. Um, we say it's asset-based, it's looking at what a community has, not what they don't have. So. Uh, what are your strengths? What are your opportunities? And let's really look at developing that long-term strategy based upon um those assets that you have that are unique to your community. Um, whether that's your history, your heritage, your architecture, your mix of businesses, your people, where you're located. Um, all of those things kind of tie together to make for a healthy and vibrant um downtown and historic core. We see this as time-tested. Um, Main Street developed this methodology in nineteen seventy-seven. And it's been used in communities across the country. Um, so we really know. Kind of the impact that can happen when we begin to work more comprehensively in all of these things. Um, and not depend on just one of these four pillars um i- in a vacuum. The beauty of this Main Street structure that Main Street America developed and that we use here in Oregon. Is its adaptability. We work with all-size communities. So we work with really, really small communities. Um, even Antelope is part of the uh rural regional Main Street hub and we've worked up to. Uh, urban neighborhood districts in Portland um and all-size communities. I would say the majority of our towns. That are part of our network right now are small, medium-sized communities. But the methodology itself um works regardless of of the size. Of population or what types of assets people have. Um, it's all make it a matter of making the most of what you do have. Um, next slide, please. In working with communities over the past few years and what our consultant found um as well when they did this. The study is by having a Main Street organization in place, we're really leaning into preserving that that sense of place. That creating that um authentic backdrop for um new investment to happen in our district. So really helping us leverage those historic characteristics of our districts, bringing back some of that characteristics. And um really um leveraging what sets us apart from any other community. Um, so we're looking at that history, that heritage, um that sense of authenticity. Um, and helping through the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant and through some of our other heritage grants. Um, that reinvestment and there are some buildings um through Oregon Heritage. Um, that have benefited from some of our resources um in terms of the historic theater, our diamonds of the rough grant programs. Um, our our Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant, so bringing back some of that historic character. So you're. You've seen some of what some of that investment can do in a community. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, just a minute.
Sure.
Can you finish up in about four minutes or less?
Sure. So. Sure, yeah. So some of the other areas, um our Main Streets are really strong uh as in place-making. Creating those vibrant um places where people want to get out of their car, stop, walk around, experience. So we see a lot of investment in that. Um, particular aspect. Next slide, please. We also, um, our Main Streets as a result of the in events and activities and the marketing that takes place, this is one of the areas. Um, that our consultant found um had the, as a result of Main Street above and beyond um economic fiscal impact. Um, through those events and activities, bringing people in to experience what's happening as well as re-engaging local community members. Next slide, please. And then, of course, our B Street organizations really lean in on supporting local um businesses within the downtown district. Connecting them to the resources and trainings that are available to help them be as successful as possible. And then creating those spaces for new entrepreneurs to flourish as well. Next slide, please. And then fundamentally, um, building those partnerships, recommending that the. The realizing that the work of Main Street is broad. Um, and that a Main Street organization can't do it alone. So recognizing that all of those organizations that are placed. Um, building those partnerships, ensuring that there's not duplication of services and activities. Um, and so our Main Streets really are good at identify who's doing what. And then leveraging and getting everybody focused uh on a shared future and vision for their work. Um, next slide. As a result of the work that our Main Streets are doing, we collect stats. You have it in. Your packets, a copy of our annual report that has updated stats. So you'll see. Both annually and cum- cumulatively, the impact um that our Main Streets are having across the state. So you can. Yeah, in terms of that new business openings, business expansion, acquisition, job creation. Um, building rehab projects, all of those types of things. Um, that data, um, we collect on a quarterly basis. Um, from our districts and next slide, please. I think one of the most important things in the work that we do is recognizing. That it's the people side of things that make a difference. So in um communities that we work with. Um, it's really a matter of getting people to establish those goals and objectives and then rolling up their sleeves and working together. Usually there's only one or um uh one paid staff person. Sometimes it's an all-volunteer effort. So really it's getting people to understand the importance of a healthy and vibrant downtown to the overall health. Of a community. I think our Main Streets are the heart and soul of a community. And if our heart isn't as strong as it possibly can be, the community won't be as strong as it can be as well. So really getting people. To um understand, appreciate and recognize the role that they play and rolling up their sleeves and volunteering. And then um last slide, I believe. That's just our contact information. So I think I finished it in your four-minute timeline. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Um, otherwise, I I thank you for your attention.
I just, before Sheri leaves, I wanted to let you all know that she just won a national leadership award for this program. Um, the Mary Means Leadership Award, uh, recognizing her many years of service at the local, state and national levels of this program. So. We're really in the, in the presence of excellence and knowledge with it.
Thank you for that, Rachel. It was a surprise to be nominated and certainly an honor. Mary Means is the um, what we call the grandmother of Main Street. She's the one. Um, who created the whole Main Street movement um back in nineteen seventy-seven. So it was certainly. The honor of my career to be able to recognize this year. So.
Thank you very much. You did very good with the time.
Sure thing.
All right, next on our agenda. Uh, this is the Walton Valley Fire. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Patrick Fayle. I'm the deputy chief for Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue. And I'm a proud resident of Newburgh for the past twenty years. Who we have in attendance tonight. Uh, in the back, you can see Truck Twenty-One, C Seven, who's our um local area battalion chief, Engine Twenty, Medic Twenty and Rescue Twenty. Did I get that right? Okay. So just as a reminder, uh, in your service area, you have a uh fully-staffed twenty-four uh hour a day. Um, three hundred and sixty-five, four-person ladder truck company, four-person engine uh company, a two-person paramedic, medic unit. You have two of those and a two-person um uh rescue as well that has firefighter paramedics on as well. And then you have um your water rescue team down here in Newburgh. So your concentration of units are pretty great. For not only advanced life support, but also uh fire protection. Today, we're gonna, uh, next slide here. I guess I do it. Perfect. We're gonna cover our wild uh fire deployments uh from twenty twenty-four, response snapshot for um. Newburgh and your two stations here, uh, what we have going and emergency medical services. Uh, what we're going to be doing with our uh successful pass of the twenty twenty-four local option levy. Our recruitment status and some things that we're doing in that area and then our bond and capital projects. So twenty twenty-four was a record-breaking year for the state of Oregon as far as wildfire. One point nine million acres burned. We had over eighty-eight Oregon task forces deployed. A task force is two engines. Usually two uh large four-person engines, two smaller units and a chief officer. And so there's eighty-eight of those deployed uh throughout Oregon this past summer. Uh, our Wildland team uh deployed specifically thirty-one individuals who were deployed between June twenty-fifth. And September thirtieth, excuse me, September thirteenth around the state of Oregon. Following our uh wildfire season, we then began deploying to California. Um, within twenty-four hours, the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office began mobilizing resources across the state to a total of three hundred and seventy. Oregon firefighters from twenty-three counties. Uh, we sent fourteen personnel. Uh, to support Washington County and Yamhill County strike teams. And one of our battalion chiefs, who also serves as a state uh level incident commander, responded to oversee the three hundred and uh seventy Oregon firefighters that deployed. To California. When we deploy to these, we take um. Considerations of what's going on in our local communities first, our eleven cities and portions of four counties. So we are making sure that we can meet our mission first before we deploy. So you'll see some uh state mobilizations we go on and then others we don't go on. Based off of what's happening in our service area and how we're able to support it. This is a snapshot. Uh, we're a data-informed organization. This is just macro-level data from your two stations, Station Twenty and Twenty-One. Um, we ran about thirty-five hundred incidents for twenty twenty-four. That's uh a little bit of an uptick from twenty twenty-three. Um, you can see that uh in the large buckets, what we're evaluating is EMS and fire. We run about seven EMS calls for every ten incidents. We run about seven EMS calls for every 10 incidents. So the majority of what our crews are running on are EMS in nature. Of those EMS calls, around 850 were high acuity. What that means is that takes a special force of people that are trained in advanced life support. They have to respond in enough concentration to affect a positive outcome. And that's usually two heavy assets or a heavy asset and a light asset with multiple paramedics on those units as well. You'll notice that structured fires, cooking fires, vehicle fires, those numbers are pretty small. Those are just snapshots for your local area. That's not our units also responding to other service areas, whether it be Dundee into Yamhill County or leading back into Washington County to help support those. Our effective firefighting force on a working fire is about 30 firefighters, from battalion chiefs on the way down to our rank-and-file firefighters. So within the city of Newburgh, you can see why you have multiple rescues, multiple heavy assets to get that initial firefighting force going and help augment the ALS force as well. We track time of day. Most of your incidents you can see are occurring when people get up, and then they start to slow down when they go to bed. As far as day of the week, it's pretty well spread out through the course of the week. And you can see a little bit of a tick up from in total incident volume from 2023. As far as emergency medical services, we've added some new palettes or new colors to the palettes that we offer, particularly around advanced practice community paramedics. So we've added one of those down into the city of Newburgh. That's Car 20. And basically what that unit does is it responds to high 911 utilizers that are using 911 to augment their normal healthcare needs. They work with those people to make a bridge between social services, the healthcare system, and the 911 system. And what we're trying to do is get them in the right lane of care rather than just going to the emergency room. We know that's not always producing the best outcome for these patients. So that program has been quite successful in the low amount, the small amount of time that it's been here. It's been here for about a year. We're gonna continue running it. There's two others throughout the fire district, 310 square miles, but they're north and south of here. So we're lucky to have one of them in here. We also, through a state grant, added Advanced Resource Medic Program, which is a two-year pilot. It either has one of our paramedics along with a physician's assistant or a nurse practitioner on it. And their real purpose is to go into the care homes in these communities. On the last slide, you saw on the heat mats from red dots, those are all care homes. So they go in there to work with care staff to figure out what they can treat on scene without putting someone in the 911 system or ensure that their staff has training to keep those low-acuity calls out of the system. The other thing that we added was nurse navigation. That's a program in partnership with American Medical Response. When you call 911, depending on how the dispatcher initial, or the call taker initially triages the call, you may be put into the nurse navigation route, which is a trained nurse on the other end of the line to either talk you through what's going on with you if it's low acuity, or to get you to other resources that are also outside of the 911 system. Our Local Option Levy that was successfully passed in May of 2024, that's going to produce 36 new FTE or firefighters to be deployed throughout the district. And that's just to meet the increasing demand that our crews are seeing. This last year, we ran approximately 60,000 incidents over 310 square miles. 42,000 of those incidents were medical calls, and we know through our unit utilization that we need to add some additional units and some bench strength to the system. As far as our recruitment, over the last several years, the fire service has been experiencing some recruitment challenges. To give you perspective, when I got hired 25 years ago, I think I competed against 2,500 applicants for 16 spots. I got really lucky that day. Today, we're having about a couple hundred applicants for the same amount of spots. What we're not seeing is the quality of our applicants going down. So that's telling us that our system is vetting applicants well. Their training is taking hold, and they're able to hit those streets with some level of, a high level of competency. So what we've done is we've really ramped up our social media to try to attract folks either to change their careers or to look at TBFNR as, as one of their first stops in their career moves. We're working in schools with programs that schools have for career development. We're working with community colleges as well. We have ramped up our Portland Metro Women's Fire Camp, and that's been highly successful for us. That's girls in high school or in college who are interested in career, either in medicine or firefighting. They can try it on for about three days, get really boosted up and see if this career works for them. We've also brought back our annual career fair, which is open to anyone, and we reestablished our internship program to make sure that that pipeline was open as well. Slide behind there. Bond and capital projects. In 2021, voters approved a general obligation bond, which we're largely using to improve and upgrade a number of our stations throughout the fire district. If you're driving down 99 at all, you'll notice that there's quite a bit of work happening at the King City Fire Station on 99. That's going to be a full teardown and a rebuild. It would not have survived in a seismic event the way that that concrete block was built. And so that's getting a full rebuild. Station 20 here is getting a full rebuild as well. We're very excited about that. It, in our assessment, will not survive in a seismic event either. The new station will be able to survive up to a 9.0 as all of our newer stations are able to withstand. It'll also bring in better accommodations for female firefighters and just a better overall response for the downtown community here in Newburgh. We continue to look for rural station sites for 22 and are proceeding with two different properties for land use discovery, and we're working through that with the property owners. Our training center is going to be rebuilt in Sherwood. That main admin building is really old. It's not meeting our needs any longer. So that's going to be torn down in this next year and rebuilt as well. As we were putting this together, one of the things that came up was just the cost of station. Five years ago, the average cost of a TBFNR station was eight to nine million dollars. Today, it's around 14 to 15 million dollars. That's just the cost of labor, increased materials and services. But also our stations are being built with decontamination zones inside. So we can keep the firefighters away from the carcinogens as much as possible. New Station 20 will have that as well, which does increase the cost per square foot to try to keep them safe. And as always, we can't fit into our presentation a full year of what's happened in TBFNR, but invite staff, council, and then anybody viewing here tonight to click on that QR code. Staff did an amazing job of putting a year in review video together, which can show you some of the exciting things that our crews have been up to. We continue to be heavily involved in the community. This year in Toy and Joy, we served 282 families and 659 children. We just participated in the egg hunt, and we're looking forward to the boat races. We provide medical services to the boat races and our involvement in the Old Fashion Festival. And before I go, we just got some new numbers in. If it's a witness cardiac arrest and TBFNR is dirt, you have a 44.7% chance of full neurological survival. That's walking out of the hospital fully intact with your friends and families. Huge part of that is our partnership with PD. And Newburgh PD is exceptional in their response with our crews. They're often, they're quick, doing hands-only CPR and applying their AED, and we could not be more proud to partner with them. They're fantastic. So give Chief Cosmicky a shout out on that and his crew, so. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So I think you guys came last year and you were having recruiting problems. Why do you think you can't get people to want to do this? I mean, it's, it sounds like a great career. It's honorable, great pay. Why, what is it?
That's a great question. You know, we've asked, we've done some polling, and we've participated in some national research, especially post-COVID. I think people are concerned about their own healthcare. They're concerned about what they could be exposed to in the course of this career. One of the polls that we saw came back to saying that they're concerned about their risk of cancer. Firefighters are seven times more likely to get certain types of cancers. So what you'll see us, what we've done in responses, we have one of the most comprehensive post-fire decontamination policies in the nation. In fact, we led the nation with our research and what we've implemented, but we've gone beyond that. Our firefighters go through yearly physicals, full scans, and we found quite a few cancers and then enabled to get them treatment early. So as we go through our recruitment, we explain that to people. Yeah, there's some risk with this. But there's also great value that you're going to see in your life. You're not going to have just your average life experience. You're going to see great joy, great tragedy, and hopefully you'll grow as a human being. So we lean into that service side of it with them. Our numbers, we're really lucky. They're, they're not as low as many, many places, but it's the work that I think staff does to get out there and tell our story in a way that speaks to people that they can see themselves doing this job. Yeah, great question.
So the station that's out on Springbrook, is that 24/7 manned also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is. Yep, with a, a truck company that can also swing into an engine depending on the call type and a medic unit. And then our battalion chief is housed out of there as well.
Are you going to come back and update us when we're ready to start construction and timelines and so forth, or do we just?
Yeah, I think we're going to get before you on timelines. Certainly, I hope to get in front of you and show you what the, what some of the renderings look like. Make sure that they're aesthetically what everybody's thinking. We want to work through all of that before we really get too deep into it, so. Thank you so much.
We have one item, a business item left on our agenda. That's the amendment to the purchasing manual. We, this should have just been put on a consent calendar.
Okay. So this is, this is really very simple. In our purchasing manual, when it came out, we aligned it to be with our ERP system. So the way our ERP system does purchase orders, as we call them, it's for a certain threshold for anything above $1,000. It will issue a purchase order. We're changing the way that we do some of our invoices, and we're updating our AP system to the latest and greatest with the ERP system. So it's changing the definition of purchase order to be 10,000 and above, and anything under will be an invoice approval, but it will still have all of the same electronic approvals it has now. It's just changing the definition that it occurs. So we wanted to make sure our purchasing manual got updated to match that language. So that is the redlined copy we included here so that it changes everything accordingly with that new lingo change with the software. And that is the whole gist of this resolution.
I read through that. It's so exciting, but it makes perfect sense. So I'm ready to move that we adopt the resolution. Unless it's premature.
Second. I would assume there's no more conversation needed on this. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same time.
Thank you.
The last item, Council Wheatley's presentation on the downtown heating case.
So I don't know that I have a presentation, but I can talk a little bit about how this whole thing got started. I think Will and Russ are going to go into more detail about it.
Great.
Oh. As one of our council goals, you know, is cleaning up downtown and just hearing feedback from citizens and the downtown coalition, I thought, well, in my research, do we need a code? Do we need some sort of way that we can help downtown get cleaned up? I met with Scott. He didn't think a code or any sort of other measure like that was necessary that we already have. We have the city that can work to clean up downtown. And in working with Will, he has a great plan, as you guys have probably seen in your email. So I thought Will could talk about it a little bit.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Detail. Yes, thank you. Ladies, thank you.
If you want to hear about downtown.
Thank you very kindly, Honorable Counselor. So yes, we already sent out a plan which was primarily devised by Mr. Thomas, who, as you know, is our Director for Public Works. I wanted to just hit briefly some of the things that we've already done. Some things will not begin until July 1st because when the money becomes available again. Well, we have already done a walking appraisal of downtown. We've done outreach to NDC, and there's going to be more of that because they might need some extra equipment. We've done a tree location survey and assessment. We've done downtown plan called Operation Curb Appeal. And I do love those good operation names. We've done a photographic survey of all of our failing signs and identified which ones must be replaced in the couplet. We reached out to Mr. Fox with ODOT and asked him if we could replace the signs, and he said, no, not without speaking to higher management. So then that is ongoing. He said that had to become a formal request, and I did that and sent it. So he has that. We also have, post this year's tough work, so after the construction work finishes, we're going to redeploy the guys that are currently working on Center Street, et cetera, to do flat work downtown and look for some patching opportunities. And Mr. Thomas will be running a lot of Operation Curb Appeal, and so, over to him.
Thanks, Will. A couple of things that have happened just recently. I just received a lot of the plan work from ODOT. As you're aware, ODOT will be coming through and updating the ADA ramps in our downtown core area. And several of the trees that are immediately adjacent to ADA ramps, such as the ones by Social Goods across the street, down towards Johnson's Furniture, that are damaging the sidewalks, the curbs, they're heaving things up, are in the construction plans for ODOT. And so what is going to happen is rather than us spending time and money to remove them, replant them, and, and bring them up to a better standard, ODOT's going to do it when they do their ADA ramps in this next cycle, which will be next summer. So we're going to live with them for a year in those capacities, but then they're going to take care of the worst trees, actually, the offenders out there. One of the other things that we've taken a look at is what we're going to do is, is an initial cleanup around them. The bases of the trees that we've done, we've assessed it, the ones that look like something out of a horror movie downtown, as, as the mayor refers to them, as are a Shenanigans clear pear, they're a grafted tree. And if anybody knows anything about tree grafting, they're a grafted root, and that's why all the shoots come out of the roots on those trees, because it's a different root stock on those, on those pears. And they get, with age, they get brittle, and so those trees are all going to get replaced over time as they, as necessary. We do have five trees that have been identified for downtown that have a deep root system. We also have new plans for the tree wells, the planters. When they planted those trees, they just dug a hole and plopped them in there. We're planting them actually a foot below grade. The top of the root, the root ball is a foot below grade, which drives it down with root barriers and things like that. So there's a lot of plans that have been done with that. We're all, so we're not going to do a lot of tree removal and concrete work this year. We're going to let ODOT do it for us on their dime. And, but we are taking a look at infill. We've got two or three that are missing. And again, we would replant trees in the late fall when it's optimum time to put them in the ground, get best survivability out of them. One of the requirements we have downtown, you see some with grates and some without grates. When we replace them as per code. When we replace them a- as per code, they have to have grates, and all the grates are ADA rated, which means people can traverse the grates uh safely uh as required by ADA because you can get all kinds of ornamental things and people can fall through them, you know, with their shoes or or devices or whatever. So we've got a plan in place, and we're gonna continue to monitor them and work on them. Uh, I have talked with several of the businesses downtown uh that are uh encouraged by the fact that things are being done, uh and hopefully get several of those on board. Uh, one of the other things that's happening, uh in addition to that, uh Second Street Parking Lot, we finally have all of the lighting supplies on hand for the solar lighting to increase the lighting in the Second Street Parking Lot. Uh, if anybody's been down there after dark, especially in the wintertime, it's it's lit along the alleyway, but as you get out towards the street, it's really dark. So we're putting in three solar solar lights uh that will be down there. And these lights were developed by a company in British Columbia, so we know they'll work after dark in the wintertime. Uh, those should be going in here in the next month uh and and be put up, and they can be programmed uh a very uh variety of ways for motion. So they can be off at one AM. Somebody walks in a parking lot, they come back on, just like your porch light. Um, and it conserves the the battery life as well for a period of time. Um, so that's gonna be happening, cleanup of of the main areas, uh Francis Square. Uh, the Butler property, we have not addressed the trees or anything over there because again, we're gonna let somebody else take care of the issues over there. Uh, although the one tree on the corner is in ODOT's plans. Uh, the flagpole area, the historic sign area, uh the Waterwise Garden, uh the areas that that uh people notice uh are gonna be taken care of, as well as the bulbout areas that we have a little bit of landscaping in it. And and kinda what our thought is, uh, we're gonna put some color in there. Uh, you know, some manuals or perennials that that will provide a little bit of color and uh for downtown uh with that. So we've got a good foundation, a good plan, and we've gone through, as Will has said, we've we've walked and surveyed every tree. We have fifty-eight that we're responsible for, the city downtown, uh that will be taken care of. And over the over the years, we're gonna be swi- switching them out to uh trees and especially getting rid of the the pear trees that are down there uh over time.
Critical for anyone uh listening at home, for every tree removed, another tree will be replaced.
So if I heard you correctly, Russ, um you said that the worst trees are the ones that are the state I was gonna take care of. So, but then I think you also said we're not gonna do any trees ourselves this year?
Uh, we got, we've got a couple of trees that we are going to replace. We've got a couple missing out of the tree wells that need to be planted, and we've identified a couple of trees that we're going to take care of um that are not in a a corner where an ADA ramp, where ODOT's gonna address them anyway.
Okay, and you feel confident that ODOT's gonna do that work next summer?
They are, I have the ninety percent plans that they sent to me for approval and comment on where you want us to replace these trees? Yes. Uh, so it's, it is happening. They are committed because they are under a Department of Justice order uh to commit uh replacement of so many ADA ramps, bring them up to code across the state. We're next on the list. They'll be starting work on some of the ADA ramps outside the downtown core area this summer. Next summer is downtown.
We're currently reaching out to landscaping companies to see if a landscaping company would like to take over the care and loving of the Waterwise Garden in exchange for a small marketing presence stating that they are doing it. So that's our one of our ways of trying to make that look better. I'm also gonna be having a meeting soon with NDC. And uh one of the things we're gonna be doing there is seeing if we can get any volunteers who might want to do more cleanups as we've done in the past. And I am personally committing to teaching people how to paint the frontages of their buildings if they don't know, may not necessarily know how to apply paint properly in an external setting, and I've done that. So uh that's another thing that we can do.
Just one more clarification. We, ODOT just did a survey, and we've, I've got the the plans in my office. That is not the same work you're talking about next year. So the uh only other piece of business I have, or does anybody else have questions for on this? All right, the only other thing, yes, Rob.
Um, so you you have the inventory completed, and you think you'll start doing some of the work on the trees and the grates this summer? Or just ongoing throughout the year?
Oh, abso- absolutely. Some of the grates, we need to get in and trim the grates because the the tree trunks have grown out and kinda moved them around. So all we gotta do is go in and cut a few rings out of them and get them back flush. Some of them we can't because it's damaged the frame or something, but we're gonna smooth that out until such time as we replace the tree. But absolutely, we're gonna start working on that this summer.
This is really exciting. I'm so happy that you guys have done this. It's really gonna make Newburgh downtown look a lot better. So, thank you.
And as soon as as soon as that ODOT letter comes back saying we can go for it, then I'm gonna have some of the guys from the engineering division out and start replacing those signs. Because the signs are all standard. We know who the manufacturer is. We just need permission.
Go ahead, Mike. So Will, on the signs, do we own the signs or does ODOT own the signs?
ODOT owns the signs, and they have told me straight to my face that they will not replace them because of a lack of money.
So ODOT owns the signs, we're gonna replace them, and we're gonna pay for it. Why, why can't we, if we're just replacing them on an existing pole, we're not putting new poles in, why can't we just go ahead and do that and just get it done? Why do we have to wait for them to come back and say something?
Because, Mike, it's naughty? It
I would rather do that, but you know.
When you're, as you know, when you're dealing with your overlaying taxing districts and other agencies, you need, you need to give unto Caesar that which is his due. And if they let us go ahead and do that, then that would be great.
If I can back up Will a little bit, too. We have created a very good working relationship with our local maintenance folks in ODOT that we're working very hard to maintain because when we call, they answer.
All right, uh Fairfield Inn is having their ribbon cutting as we speak, or probably a few minutes ago. Uh, I was down there for a few minutes. He wanted me to let the counselors know that he's, they're going to set up a day for the uh city staff and counselors to come down and see their new facility. It is a beautiful facility, and it's gonna serve Newburgh well. All that being said, we're adjourned.